Couple of minutes late, and we'll do a roll call, please.
Mayor, she asked me to do it.
Okay.
At first.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, John Capocia. Council members, Rachel Arizmendi.
Here.
Denise Delmar.
Here.
And Jean Goss.
Here. Okay, and everyone is here, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Arizmendi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, did we stand? Uh, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel," was one of Maya Angelou's most famous quotes. The day after our last city council meeting, May 28, 2014, Maya Angelou died at the age of 86. She lived as a life, she lived a life as a teacher, architect, artist, writer, and human being. She was a warrior for equality, tolerance, and peace. Over the span of 50 years, she, she published seven autobiographies, including her acclaimed "I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings," which also happened to be a required reading in my high school class, three books of essays, several books of poetry, and was credited with a list of plays, movies, and television shows. So I thought it fitting to open our meeting with an excerpt from one of her poems that she recited at a presidential inauguration. All of us knows, not what is expedient, not what is going to make us popular, not what the policy is, or the company policy, but in truth, each of us knows what is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam City Attorney, report out of closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session with its legal counsel regarding an existing matter of litigation, Ellens versus City of Sierra Madre. Direction was given to legal counsel, but no action was taken. The council also met in closed session to discuss a matter of threatened litigation, or I, pardon me, I misspoke, of potential litigation, and direction was provided to legal counsel, no other action was taken. The last two items that are on the closed session agenda will be deferred until after the open session.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
I'd like to.
Oh, you have any changes, I'm sorry.
I wanted to suggest a couple of changes, if I could. Oops, I'd like to pull out two of the consent calendar items for just a really quick discussion. The fee wa, item C, 1C, fee waiver policy, and also item 1F, the demolition of the duty man house.
No objection here. Anything else? So with those changes, yeah?
With those changes, they approve, in second order.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then are opposed. How about an approval of the minutes, please?
I have one change. Well, I, can I give it to you? I just wanna delete the line that says that I was in favor of the NRA. I said twice in the meeting that I was not in favor, and I did suggest that I might be if we went with the letter, so if we just delete that one thing, I'll be okay with it.
Do you know what page it was on?
No, but I will give it to you right after we.
Okay, thank you.
Just pulling up, don't want to.
And that was not the National Rifle Association.
That was the Record.
And I gave each of you a copy of a change that the city attorney made, so I've already put it in the minutes.
Great. Any other changes to the minutes?
I just have one little one, and that's on page eight, halfway down. I think it's supposed to be Councilmember Delmar noted that the committee members and staff learned that they had been developed, we're just kinda missing a, missing a letter.
On noted, Denise, is that, okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the minutes with those changes.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's your names. And we'll go into Mayor and City Council reports, and I'll start to my right. Councilmember Delmar.
Oh, well, one thing is we're having a bourbon cutting tomorrow night, Sierra Madre, the bike shop, will be, having a bourbon cutting, so maybe y'all can now see that. I really enjoyed the older American reception, that was how they did a great job, and nice to get to meet Mr. Johnson and his family, and I think that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Arizmendi.
I, I was ditto and echo, the, our older American awardee, and he is here tonight, it's good to see you here, it was a great event, and there were a few other city events, I know with the Kensington opening, and also our British House had their June fair, so it seems like it's been quite a busy week.
Mr. Goss?
No report.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I have a few things, I'm gonna try to go quickly here, but please bear with me. Okay, first of all, I did meet with Makayla Ryan, who was our school district representative, so we were just kicking around some ideas, so we wanna, you know, take it further and ultimately have a joint meeting with the Sierra Madre City Council, as well as the, and the board, after we finalize a list of things that we wanna discuss. I attended the LA County sanitation meeting, very interesting how quickly those things, but the big point about what happened at that meeting is that they did go forward with the rate increase that all of you got a notice of, and the opportunity to submit a protest letter. So, just really quick, it's about a $4 per year rate increase over the next few fiscal years. I do wanna point out that right now, for our district, it costs about less than $13 a month, and that's compared to about $44 in Orange County, and LA is $34, and even in some places in the rest of the country, it's much more. Part of the reason for the increase is about a $600 million capital improvement, mainly for the tunnel that goes from the sanitation facility all the way out to the ocean. There were about 127,000 letters submitted, 52 protests only, and I, from, ransacked through one from Sierra Madre, I thought that was interesting. Okay, I attended a Biz Fed Institute Clean Water for Life and Business, and you were there, weren't you, Congressman? I asked you.
I have.
Oh, okay, I looked around, didn't see you, but anyway, just a good seminar, again, reiterating some of the drought challenges we have, and one of the, and lessons from Australia, we went through a much more severe drought, how that changed water policy in general. One of the big things is a push for the Bay Area Delta Plan, that a bond is gonna be on the November ballot for that, and the Biz Fed Institute, this is a, an institute of businesses, that what they're trying to do is get businesses to understand some of the issues that we have in legislative arenas, and they wanna just ensure that businesses are in support of a bond measure that includes storm water capture, water recycling, and storage for our long-term security with water. And of course, the NPDES is a big part of that, too. I attended the San Gabriel Valley Cog, and Mayor Hurd, will you talk a little bit about that? Because I wanted you to mention what you had suggested at the meeting.
Sure.
I thought it was a good one.
Sure.
I'll let you do it. I attended SCAG, the environmental meeting, and there was a really good presentation by Monrovia's Mayor, Mary Ann Lutz, on an NPDES cost survey. Madam City Manager, did you get that survey? Did it come to you? They're trying to get all the cities to take this cost survey, because the intent of it is to capture the real costs of what we pay for, not only for water, for sewers, for storm water, and what this is going to cost each of us as taxpayers to try to get some relief, because there's a Water Quality Improvement Act that's being formed right now. Grace Napolitano is part of that, is a Democrat, she's collaborating with Gibbs from Ohio, who's a Republican, and what they're trying to do is encourage more investment instead of fines, because the NPDS permit is very heavy on fines and penalties, and to factor in affordability, and they're looking for about $2 billion per year for five years to help us with the stormwater compliance.
Yes, we did get it, and we submitted it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, there was also a presentation on natural gas, I'm just mentioning that because if you guys get a chance, I mean, it's really interesting how natural gas is gonna be helping, hopefully helping us to meet our, not so much the greenhouse gas emissions, but the real problem is nitrous oxides and ozone in the air, which is much more stringent from EPA than our ability to meet the greenhouse gas. Everybody's talking about the greenhouse gas problem, but to meet the EPA clearing air requirements is a much more stringent challenge. And also just wanna report that last Friday, we had Chief Gianoni held a police town hall, but I think we need to do a little bit better getting the word out, it was an outstanding presentation, not only by Chief Gianoni, but also a fellow from the Secret Service that talked about identity theft and credit card fraud, and, and just, of course, the next morning, Chief busted two guys trying to get into that Valero gas station and skim off credit card information. So anyway, I'm just hoping we do this again, maybe perhaps after the first, or September, when the kids are back at school, and we can publicize it with flyers, because this is just really, really good information that I think every citizen needs to know, and as you all know, too, I don't know if anybody was gonna mention that, but we just got ranked number eight as far as the safest city in California. I think we could be number one if we just, if everybody knows what to do and acts on it, working with our police department, I think we could get there, and that would be a really great thing to be number one as far as the safest place to live in California. Okay, thank you for bearing.
Busy two weeks, busy, busy two weeks. Thank you. I just have a few, few things to mention. Our Concerts in the Park series is starting on June 14th, Pasadena Community Orchestra will be playing, followed by Rex Meriwether, and then a few others, Cash Up Front, which is a Johnny Cash tribute band, Elvis, of course, and a few others. So, check that out, should be fun. Also, Saturday, June 28th, is the 23rd anniversary of the Sierra Madre earthquake, and the city is sponsoring an earthquake preparedness event. Bring your children down for the earthquake simulator, it's called the Quaky Shaky Trailer. A mobile classroom that simulates a 3.5 scale earthquake, and there will be safety and emergency planning information booths, the volunteer firefighters will have free hot dogs and drinks, and again, it's June 28th, 10 a.m. to noon, at the fire station. Yesterday, I attended a Metro Service Council meeting, and just a quick update, the MTA Board finalized and approved rate increases for not only the Gold Line and, and the bus services for 2015, they didn't actually institute fee increases for 2016 or 17 yet, they're gonna go back and, after the 2,015 fee increases go into effect, they wanna study that more and see which groups are being affected and how it's affecting the budget. So, the fee increases are, are set to come in shortly, so to the extent that you do take the buses or the Gold Line, you'll see a slight uptick there. And then at the cog meeting that the Mayor Pro Tem and I attended, we actually passed new bylaws and did a little bit of administrative cleanup, and one of the things that we did discuss was the terms that the executive board were allowed to serve on the cog, and historically, the president and the first vice president, second vice president, third vice president were allowed to, are still allowed to serve two years, and, ah, two terms. And, and I, and along with a few other members, pushed to actually scale that back, and only allow the president and the vice presidents to serve one year and then, and then cycle off. And unfortunately, we're in the minority, there was only 11 of us that, that voted for that, but I thought it would've been a good idea to try to get other cities onto the executive board and get more newer council members involved, but it didn't carry the day. So, it was a good discussion, and I think it's, it was, it was a good sign that the cog is actually really now a, an organization that is, I guess, worried about how process, how the process goes, and how the perception of the cog is to the outside, and is doing its best to try to make sure that administratively and, and from a process standpoint, they're doing everything they can. So, it was a good meeting, and, oh, and that's all I have to report. So, from that, we will go to public comment for items not on the agenda. No, it's okay, I thought you was talking to me.
Ready?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Amy Putnam, I'm president of the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society, and I'm here to promote the annual chicken and ravioli dinner, which will be June 28th, so after you've gotten all shaken up, and you're with the earthquake day stuff, you can come up to the Mount Wilson Trail Park on Miramonte, and from 5 to 8, enjoy Lizzie's Famous Chicken and Ravioli Dinner. We're also going to have some items for either a silent auction or a raffle, we're not quite sure how we're going to do that, but a lot of local businesses have contributed toward this. The museums will be open. Last year, when we had this event, the digital storyboard had not yet been installed, but as you all know, it went in in September, but there are some people who have not availed themselves of the opportunity, seeing the digital storyboard, and the teen docents from the library will be there during the dinner to do their presentation with a digital storyboard. We have newly painted Richardson House, thank you, Councilmember Capocia. John Capocia did a lot of the work on that, the interior was recently completed, it looks beautiful, the exterior has also been completed earlier. There were a couple of other people, and Rotary Club, there, there were other people who worked on this project, too. So, we've got a brand spanking new painted Richardson House that will be staged to look like a museum, finally, and Lizzie's will be open with a pinball machine, so you can go play pinball. We have a new storage unit that has been installed to house our artifacts, so it should be a fun time. Oh, Joe Tortomasi is going to entertain us with his ukulele music.
And where can we buy tickets?
You can buy tickets at, thank you Denise, you can buy tickets at the Sierra Madre Public Library, Arnold's Hardware, Savor the Flavor, Mary's Market, and at Lizzie's Trail Inn on Saturdays from 10 to noon, which is, is open hours. So we hope to see all of you there, it will be a really fun time. Thank you. I'll be there.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Ms. Putnam, I understand that Lizzie is rumored to be making an appearance.
Lizzie, you know, Lizzie came last year, we invited her, and she was able to make it, and it's my understanding that she has put it on her calendar this year, so we're, we're looking forward to having Lizzie there again.
I hope, hope the rest of the council goes, I went last year, it was really a lot of fun, it was great.
And famous Sierra Madre lemonade, you will have water, of course, with your dinner,
but also our famous Sierra Madre lemonade, that I spent two hours this afternoon squeezing a gallon and a half of lemon juice for.
Oh, wow.
Any other questions, Denise, did you have some?
No, I'm a little.
Okay, we're looking forward, yeah, great, we look forward to seeing you all there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Pete Cibberell, 331 Surtivan Drive. Next month, I'll be ending my six years as a trustee of the Sierra Madre Library. I've enjoyed my time thoroughly, and I've gotten so much back from this opportunity for community service. Not that I had anything to do with it, but I am happy to say that I'm leaving the library in excellent shape, these are exciting times for the library. Carolyn Thomas, Megan Tosh, and their staff are top-notch professionals who are helping the library truly serve its community. Over 5,000 items from books to ebooks to books on tape to DVDs are circulated each month. 6,500 patrons visit the library per month, 800 people log on to our public computers each month, and over the course of a year, we offer 256 free programs for all ages with over 6,000 people attending them. Much of our work at the library is done by volunteers, we have a terrific volunteer base, but we're, this summer, we're looking for more help through a variety of ways. One is our teen docent, teen history docents who learn Sierra Madre history and give weekly tours on Tuesdays. Our team volunteers to assist with the summer reading program. Adults with computer skills are needed to assist with digitizing city documents, and local history volunteers to file materials in the archives. And finally, we'll have great programs coming up this summer. Our Pause to Read Summer Reading Program runs from June 9th to August 2nd. Kids and adults are urged to sign up now and to read and earn prizes, 175 people have already signed up in two days. So I'll leave some information on the program with you. And then Family Fun Programs will be held throughout the summer. We invite you to stop by the library and see for yourself what's happening at your library this summer, like the Wisteria Vine and the Mount Wilson Trail Race, or the Mount Wilson Trail. The library is one of our treasures of Sierra Madre, so thanks to the council and the community for your support.
Yeah, Pete, I'll just, as, you know, on behalf of the city and the council, thank you for your service, and we really appreciate everything you did, and sad to see you go, and please think about jumping on another commission.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Jerry Gerson, Highland Avenue Arcadia. I'm here on behalf of Madre del Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. I believe that all of the city council members received a copy of a letter, press release that was sent out. I noted at the Planning Commission meeting that one of the Planning Commissioners suggested or introduced the fact that the, a letter, that this same letter be included for the record in the minutes of that meeting, and I would like to do the same for your city council meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anything else?
I'm Barry Gold, with the 441 Mountain Avenue. At some of the recent city council meetings and Planning Commission meetings, there have been discussions about a few planned housing developments. And, I have been reading about it and talking to people about it, and I just don't see where the people of this city want this to happen. These proposed, inappropriate and out-of-place houses would just not fit in. They would ruin the look of our community in the field. I, I lived in Arcadia for 20 years, I moved here two and a half years ago. I'm sure you can all figure out why. I just don't want to have the houses around me transformed into things that look like they need a moat around them. It just will destroy our, our way of life. So, I'm really, really worried. And, I just wanted to thank you and take this opportunity to say to all of you, and the members of the Planning Commission, who I spoke to a week or so ago, and to the staff, to know that we are counting on all of you to protect us and not let these outside people come in and make their profits and run away to some other place to do the same thing over again. So, please, protect us from these type of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Any other comments? Seeing none. At this point, we're going to do a presentation in recognition of the Sierra Madre Older American of the Year, Richard Johnson. Dick Johnson's back at the council meeting again. Last time he came, we didn't have a proclamation, so we'll actually do it this time. Mr. Johnson, if you want to come up to the podium?
How you doing?
Fine, okay.
I'll be listening, we'll turn the mic over to you.
Okay. So, the proclamation, which is Certificate of Recognition, very pretty, in recognition of Richard Johnson, 2014, Sierra Madre Older American. Whereas, Richard Johnson is a longtime resident of Sierra Madre, whereas, lived with his wife Elva and children Rick, Christie, Heidi, Carrie, and Jason. Richard, along with his wife Elva restored the historically significant Wilson Bixby House, in which he lived with his wife and family. And, whereas, Richard Johnson has served as chairman of the annual Friends of the Library Art Fair for four years. He has been an active member of the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society since 1980, where he served as president for 12 years and is currently serving as secretary. Richard continues to volunteer his time to many community groups, including the Sierra Madre United Methodist Church, where he currently serves on the Board of Trustees. In addition, Richard is a faithful supporter of and past coach of baseball teams in the Sierra Madre Little League and Pony League, and has served as coach, referee, board member, and lead commissioner of the local ASO. And, whereas, the city of Sierra Madre is truly fortunate to have a highly committed and motivated volunteer such as Richard Johnson. Whereas, Richard has been, has been recognized by the Sierra Madre Senior Community Commissioner, and on May 27th, 2014, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors acknowledged Richard Johnson for his outstanding achievements on behalf of the city of Sierra Madre. Now, therefore, be to proclaim that the city council of Sierra Madre does hereby commend Richard Johnson for his outstanding contributions to the community, his designation as Sierra Madre's 2014 Older American of the Year. Presented at this day, Mayor John Harbidian, Mayor Protem, John Capocia, council members Michelle Arizmendi, Denise Delmar, and Jean Goss. And Dick, I'll say that there's no one more deserving of this award than you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Go over the duck, have a good, see that beautiful button on it, that looks great. Nice, right? How many, is this your third one?
Where'd you just went?
That's good, come on. Okay, okay, give me a big smile.
Hey!
Get it?
Good, oh, great.
Want to say a few words?
Yeah.
Thank you, Dick.
Well, all my life, as living here, I just felt that I needed to support all these activities that I had done, and they were very enjoyable to do. And I, I have five children, and so, we did a lot of youth sports, and I just participated to whatever level I needed to. And, also, I was kind of gotten into the art fair by Mary Tomonti, who was very persuasive. If anybody knows. And, she got me to do it about four times. So, anyway, that was pretty a lot of fun. I, I felt that the art fair was a wonderful thing, and I enjoyed doing it. And, and I, I was on the, the trustees of the library for one of the sessions for three years, and I enjoyed that also. I just enjoyed doing things for the city. And I, in my older age, I've kind of tapered off a little bit. I think that people in Sierra Madre do a lot of volunteering, and I think it's part of our life.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
And I'll say that the ceremony, two weeks ago, was just great. You know, there's so many people that came out, family and friends, that love you very much, and congratulations, enjoy this year. It's your year, so, have fun. Thank you, Dick. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. I'll, I'll let you guys go. Yeah, you know, it's always that, should I go? Yeah, you can go. You can definitely go. Yep. And, as you're leaving, Director Inman's going to do a presentation on water.
Good evening. Oh, all right, surprises. Good evening, honorable, good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. We start out tonight with the usual picture of the dry settling basins. As we all know, the drought continues, and the need to conserve water in Sierra Madre continues. In May, our conservation effort was decreased somewhat. We were down to about a 5% level of conservation over last year. That is a decrease in our conservation over the prior months. This month, we're starting out a little bit better. So far, we're at about 8.1% on our production, on our conservation. This will give you 2014 at a glance. You can see that we, we are actually using more water in January this year than we did last, but we have had some good conservation periods since then. One of the things that we've added to this monthly presentation is this chart of water levels. This happens to be a 12-year his, excuse me, 12-month history on well five. The top of that row of vertical lines is the static water elevation at that well. And, as those vertical lines show, when the well is turned on, the bottom of that line is what, what represents the water elevation in the well. So, so that band of vertical lines indicates the fluctuation in, in well level. And, this increase in, in water levels is due to the fact that Sierra Madre has stopped pumping. There we are in October, where we shut our wells down. Somewhere about this time, it looks like Arcadia shut their wells down. And as a matter of interest, we have this one little blip right here where the water levels dropped. That was a weakened period when Arcadia turned their wells on toward emergencies. So, you can see how sensitive water levels are to pumping at this time. In terms of history, of course, on October 9th, we shut the wells down. The water level at that, at that well was 339, above mean sea level. As of June 6th, that water level has come up 37.4 feet. If all conditions remain the same, production, lack of water to put into the aquifer, it's going to take at least 27 months to reach the 500-foot level where we can start pumping our full adjudication. Understand, though, however, that 500-foot level is when we have to stop pumping. So, in reality, even though we will have reached 500 feet, we're going to have to go up further than that in order to be allowed to start pumping our full adjudicated right. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director Inman. Any questions? And although this is a presentation, if anyone in the public has a comment, feel free to come up. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar as amended. So, items 1A, B, D, E, and G. Madam City Manager, do you mind giving an overview?
Mayor, members of the city council, at Consent Calendar, item 1A is adoption of Resolution 14-50, approving the city's demands. At 1B is adoption of Resolution 14-41, which is adopting our mid-year budget estimate for the fiscal year ending, it's fiscal year 2013-14, which ends on June 30th, 2014. And also, the approved committed general fund balances. At 1D is the cancellation of both council meetings in the month of August for the summer recess, and authorizing staff to pay any necessary expenses during that month time period. At 1E is second reading of Ordinance 1354, amending the municipal code, Chapter 17.08, zoning definitions, Chapter 17.20, one-family residential, and Chapter 17.52, hillside management zone. And the recommendation is that the city council wait for the reading and adopt Ordinance 1354. And then, 1G is Resolution 14-46, granting a temporary users permit, 14-06, for a household hazardous waste roundup event, which will be held in the Mariposa parking lot on August 16th, 2014. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll open it up for public comment. Any comment on items 1A, B, D, E, or G? And seeing none. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept a consent calendar as presented, with the exception of the items that were pulled.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. And, Madam City Manager, a brief overview of item 1C, please.
Item 1C is, let me jump to that page very quickly, is a modification to the city's fee waiver policy for the use of city facilities for things like special events. The Community Services Commission has the authority to review and grant fee waivers, and felt that the policy that was previously approved was very constricting. And, the Community Services Commission decided to revise that policy to give a bit more latitude to the commission to be able to grant fee waivers for events at the city's facilities. The fundraisers, the fee waiver policy will still pertain to, let's see here, I want to give you a summary of what the changes are. The city will consider a waiver for fees for private use of city facilities if the events meet certain approved criteria, such as whether or not the event has been granted a fee waiver in the past, whether the event serves a public or community purpose or benefit, any other benefits to the community that would be provided by the individual or organization putting on the event, the financial impact of the fee that is sought to be waived for the event, and whether or not the organization seeking the waiver is a for-profit or nonprofit entity. And lastly, the city's financial condition at the time the fee waiver is requested. The Community Services Commission unanimously approved the, there was an initial revision to the policy, it was reviewed by the city attorney with some minor changes made. That went to the commission at their most recent meeting. That was also unanimously approved, and it's now before the city council for your consideration.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Okay, I don't, oh, just a question on item number four, the financial impact of the fee sought to be waived on the event and/or the individual or organization putting on the, the event. Is that meant to also consider the effect on, you know, other city departments, maybe not just the organization putting on the event, but maybe Public Works would have to incur something for cleanup, or the police department maybe having to provide some additional supervision?
Correct.
That would be covered in that?
It could include that. Could be something that the commission could consider.
Okay, well, that's my only questions. I'll hold my comments and thoughts about it until after we close our comment.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll open it up to public comment. And seeing no one, we'll bring it back. You can go with your comments.
All right. Okay, just, I'd like to hear what the others on the council think about this. But, item number one, whether the event has historically been granted a fee waiver, I just don't think that that should be part of the criteria. I mean, really, is, item number two, whether the event serves as a public or community purpose or benefit, I think is the important thing. And then, item number three, too, I think item number three is meant to suggest that if the organization has in the past provided benefits, we would consider that with regard to a fee waiver for this. Is that what that is saying? I should have asked.
It could include, it could include that.
Okay.
History of, of their benefits.
Yeah. Okay, so I just, I just think, my recommendation is to strike number one, and also to strike number six. I really just didn't think it was a practical thing for the Community Services Commission to make an assessment on the financial condition of the city to do this. I mean, if it has merit, do it. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of money here. So, I thought maybe that would be helpful to remove that constraint so that we don't spend a lot of time debating that issue. So, those are my suggestions, basically, to remove number one and six, and just go with it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on this?
I'll just comment on this simply because I sat on this commission for five years, and this was a very long-term discussion item over, over the last year, maybe even two years. And it was carefully deliberated, a lot of discussions. And I think, also being the liaison for this last meeting, it, it was really underscored that these items may be considered, and not that they must be considered. The, the premise of revising this policy was simply because we were so rigid with it. If it did not exactly fit something, we were saying no, or not granting it. And there were some very valid requests for permit waivers, partial or, or full. And, we just found, wow, it doesn't fit any of these parameters. So, that was the impetus of the, the change. And, again, it was underscored by the commission that it may be considered, but is not a requirement. And even if it is considered, let's say the historical piece, it doesn't have to be the, the one issue that will push it one way or the other. So, I, and I just want to say, I do feel very strongly about the way that it's written, simply because I've heard a lot of the discussions that have gone behind the decisions made to put this forward.
Thank you.
I would just like to comment, as the one who's always pushing our customer service, this seems to be a friendlier proposal coming forward. And quite frankly, I always like what the commission has come up with. I always think they work really hard, they think about it, they do the research, and I'm inclined to go with it as it's written.
I do agree with Mayor Protem on issue number six. I don't, as a practical matter, I don't believe that that judgment can really be ascertained, but it's not a deal breaker for me. I do agree that it does have a good feel to it, as a total policy.
Yeah, my perspective is, number six jumped out at me as well. You know, the financial condition of the city, to me, shouldn't play a huge part in this, if any. And, whether the event has historically been granted a fee waiver, you know, if I was a commissioner, that'd be something I might ask. You know, I'd probably want to know, well, have we granted this, this event or this organization fee waivers in the past? So, I think it could be relevant. Number six, I would be inclined to take it out. Now, I do also recognize that the commission did work hard on this, and it was a, it was a, a long discussion. That being said, I just don't, I think it's almost a burden for them to even have that as an option.
option. You know, I mean, if they have to come back, and I know it's not necessary, but if they come back as a commission and say, you know, we would like to know what the financial condition is of the city, and whether we can, we can grant this fee waiver, I don't really know how the city, how do we, how do we answer that? You know, I mean, I think it actually might even just be, you know, something that holds up the process. So, you know, I'd be inclined to scratch six, but then keep everything else. So...
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
I approve that we go ahead and approve the revisions, with the exception of item number six, and just strike that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. And all those opposed, none? And I will say that the commission did a great job on this. It's really nice, and I think it's a better, it's a better way of approaching the fee waiver. So, nice job to Councilmember Ayers-Mendi, so, and the rest of the commissioners. Now, on to item 1F.
Okay, I don't, just to say, Tom, I don't require an overview here, but I just wanted to propose adding one thing at the end, is the staff recommendation, adding, determine a plan for the antique fire truck that's in the garage, and clean up the rest of the stuff on the factory as well, and get it out of there.
Verbatim. I want, could that be verbatim, clean up the rest of the stuff?
Can you define "stuff"?
They want it.
I know, I know, I know.
Determine a plan for the stuff at the garage.
Yeah, clean the stuff out, and, and come up with a plan for the antique fire truck. If the truck is valuable, then I'd say, you know, maybe within a year, come up with a plan. And the plan could take us out 10 years, say, restore it within 10 years. But I just, I'm just a little uncomfortable just having some ancient metal just sitting in the garage there with no, no plan. I mean, I understand there's wishes, but we should have a solid plan.
Okay.
That's our recommendation.
Any questions before we open it up for public comment? We'll open it up. And Chief, if you, if you care to comment on the, the old fire truck, you can. Don't feel like you have to. Honestly, don't. So, it's, it's fine. And seeing that we don't have any public comment, we'll bring it back. Any, any thoughts on the Mayor Protem's suggestion?
It should, it should be in there. It's a significant item, right?
What?
The, the truck.
I don't know.
Well, I'm assuming if we're saving it in the garage, it must be significant.
The interesting thing about it, when we had the tour, the Public Works Director didn't even know what was in the garage.
It is...
He doesn't have the key. The fire, the fire department does.
Fire department does. No, that's part of the plan, is we'll, we'll do an assessment on...
Okay.
I don't know what it looks like either, so we'll, we'll include it in, in figuring out what to do.
See, the other point is, is I, I mean, I don't know, but maybe, again, when the, the Community Services Commission looks at the property as to what to do with it, it might be a better and higher use for that garage as well. I mean, I don't know, so...
Yeah. No, I don't have a problem with it. Do we have consensus? Is anyone strongly against that idea?
No.
Yeah, so, I don't think we need a formal motion, do we, Madam City Manager?
No, I understand.
All right. Thank you. On to item number two.
We do need a vote on the item, though, in general.
Oh, excuse me, of course.
The whole item in general.
I will entertain a motion on the vote, on the whole item.
Okay, I'll move that we go ahead and approve 1G, or no, I'm sorry, which one was it?
1F.
1F with the additional recommendation.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Thank you. And item number two, and this will be a report by our city engineer, Mr. Charbadian.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item is a public hearing on the, on the approval of the city's assessment districts. There are five districts to be considered tonight. The Central Business Landscape District, the Business Parking District, the Community Facilities District, known as Carter 1, and two sewer districts, namely the East Miramani and East Bonita Sewer Districts. Two resolutions are required by law to approve the district charges. First, a resolution of intention is adopted, and finally, a resolution of confirmation to levy the assessments is adopted following a public hearing. On May 9, on May 13, I'm sorry, the City Council adopted Resolution of Intention Number 14-28, and directed the city engineer to prepare an engineer's report for next fiscal year, and also directed staff to set June 10 as a date for a public hearing on this matter. The engineer's report and resolution of confirmation are attached to tonight's staff report. Staff is proposing that all assessment charges remain unchanged for next fiscal year. Therefore, staff's recommendation tonight is as follows: To receive and file the engineer's report, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and adopt Resolution of Confirmation 14-45 for all five districts. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for the city engineer? Thank you very much. We'll open this up for public comment. It's actually a public hearing, so the public hearing is now open. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments? And seeing none. Yeah, it does. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the, receive and file the engineer's report, and adopt the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. City Engineer. On to item number three. We have a status update on the Committee on Compensation and Consideration Resolution 1447, modifying the part-time hourly wages in the City of Saramatra Classification Plan. Director Cox?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Harbidian, and members of the City Council. This evening, I'm here to present an update on the Compensation Committee that both commission, I'm sorry, council members, Denise Delmar and Rochelle Ayers-Mendi sit on, as well as City Manager and myself. This Compensation Committee came about when the state increased the minimum wage. There'll be an increase July 1 of this year, and then again, January 1 of 2016. We had some part-time positions that fall under the, both the 2014 and 2016 upgrades to the minimum wage, and the City Council, as part of the strategic plan, asked us to go back and look at how increasing those positions would affect the compaction throughout our entire salary matrix. Additionally, the City Council had asked us to update the comparisons for our salary and benefits that was last presented to the City Council in 2011. That larger comparison will be coming forward later, probably in July, along with the full-time information. But this evening, we want to give you an update of where we are so far, and ask the City Council to adopt a resolution to increase some of our part-time salaries, to take our sal, our part-time salaries from a five-step pay range to just one step at our current step three, and additionally, to take our part-time employees who are in PERS, there's, I believe, 10 of them, and to increase their employee share to their PERS, their retirement contribution to the full 8% at the same time that all of the rest of the full-time employees' contribution will be going up. And just as an FYI, the part-time employees who are not in PERS are already paying 7.5% of their hourly wage into a alternate retirement system. So this is pretty consistent with what the other ones are paying. They'll be paying 8% instead of the 7.5%. Would you like me to keep going, or would you like to ask some questions? I know we like to keep our...
Yeah, I think we can get into the questions.
All right. I'd like to answer any questions you may have, then.
Any questions for Director Cox?
Well, someone's got to ask a question.
Yeah.
Rochelle and I were there.
Yeah, it's the only three of us that don't know this.
Councilmember Capoche, if you could check your microphone, just a quick test. Okay, good. We just received calls, people can't hear you at home.
Okay. What was the thought of, instead of increasing this in two steps, to just do it in one step? I understand there's, there's a year and a half between the two mandated raises.
Well, one of the thoughts is, when we move everything to step three, instead of having steps one through five, you only have then the one library page that's under it, that, that is under. So, by moving the library page up to the 1010 now, then you just don't have to come back in a year, and it's an efficiency process. That's probably the biggest reason for doing it all at once. The library page, to, to go out and do it in two steps, it'll probably save the city maybe $2,000.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Gosse, nothing? Yeah, I don't have any questions either, so thank you very much. I'll open this up for public comment. And seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion. And if Councilmembers Ayers-Mendi or Delmar want to kick it off?
I would like to thank Director Cox for all the hard work and putting all of our work into this report. It turned out really nice. We have been spending quite a bit of time looking at all the salary issues, and the health benefits, and the retirement benefits. And I appreciate the time that you're giving, and Rochelle's insight to all of this as well. And I think this is a good start. And I do think we should just go ahead and do the, do it for the two years and get it done. Legally bound to do it, might as well do it now. And I, I do agree that we need to reduce those five steps to one, as well.
Thank you.
I echo a lot of what Denise just said. But I actually was very pleased with the response time that the staff had with a lot of the, and I will say, demands that both councilmen, councilmember Delmar and myself had, because after even our first meeting, it was like, well, where's this? Where are the health benefits? What's the percentage of pay for pensions? And comparisons even with the surrounding community. So, I do thank you again for the time that you and your staff put into it. And it's very comprehensive, and, and I think what I want to just share with the, the council is that, I'm sure you've read the report, but page three really highlights where we want to go in the next three to five years. As much as our immediate task was to look at the part, the part-time and positions to make sure that we're meeting the minimum wage requirements, I think there's still a lot more work to do, and we are in the right direction, and I support the way that the resolution is put forward.
Really have nothing to add to it. It looks pretty straightforward to me, and I think you're definitely going in the right direction here.
Just a comment, it's nice to have people with some personnel experience, and I feel like we're in really good hands here. So, thank you both.
Mm-hmm. Did you? And I think the Y rating was a, was a good touch, and I think it was the right thing to do. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I support it.
Okay.
I will second.
So, we, we need a motion to pass Resolution 1447 and 1448. And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to go who's second?
I did.
And that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to item number four, City Hall hours. All right.
At a special meeting in April of 2013, the City Council unanimously agreed to reduce the hours that City Hall is open to the public from 11:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. This change was officially adopted as a part of the budget and went into place July 1, 2013. Attached to the staff report were the, were the previous staff reporting why the City Council had made this change during the public. In 14, councilmember said the City Council...
For questions in, if you have any questions for you on this?
Issues are coming into the front door?
Yes, the majority of the people that are coming in are coming in to go to the planning counter. The planning counter, I believe, saw season average of 29, Danny stepped out, I believe it's 29 people per day. The, most people come in at that 11 to 12 o'clock to go to the planning counter, and everything else is pretty well dispersed out for the rest of the day. It tapers off towards the evening.
What, what other things do people come to the front desk for?
They come in for business licenses, for yard sale permits, will get a call on recreation classes or facilities. Those are probably our biggest one, oh, and to pay our water bills.
Right.
Do we, can you get a business license? Can you apply online?
That, I'm...
Not currently.
Not yet.
How about a yard sale permit?
Not yet.
Not currently.
You can get a yard sale permit at the police department.
At the police department? Okay. How many, how many people per day come in that don't go to the planning department?
Less than 20, less than 20.
Less than 20?
On average.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, listen, question, can you give us any kind of a number in terms of what the city is saving by not being open in the morning?
You know, there's not a dollar amount that you're saving. What you're saving on is the, the process of how quickly city business is getting done, how quickly we're able to bring things back to the City Council, get projects done, the work that staff's been able to do on the general plan. That's where, that's where you're saving. It's a time thing. But I wouldn't say there's really a dollar amount that we can attribute to that.
Would it be fair to say that you're talking about productivity?
Absolutely.
But we can't measure that. That's a guesstimate.
Yeah, it'd be, I mean, if we, if you wanted to say if we doubled the number of staff we had, that we could get the same type of work done. I mean, I didn't do any analysis on that. We could look at that if you'd like.
So I do have a question.
Yes.
How many of the people that work the front desk are involved in all these other projects?
Everybody that works the front desk is, has at least two jobs. So, one job is the customer service side of, you know, answering the phone, greeting people as they come in. They also have an additional job. One person, full-time, is working on our accounts payable. The other one is working on our water billing.
So, how does that affect all the other projects that are up?
The biggest way that the resident is going to see it is through the water bills. We've been able to get the water...
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Because I, the report said, and what, and what Councilwoman Gosse was asking was, what is the savings? And there really isn't a savings, but you're saying there's productivity. My question is, we're talking about the front desk, really, right? No.
We're talking development services. Also, Public Works has a lot of people that come in. I should have mentioned requests about trees, or if they are doing any kind of encroachment permits, their public counter is busy as well. I mean, it still stays within that. Those are all within that 20 outside of development services.
Okay.
But the, I would say every department is affected, probably except for Human Resources.
So, so people come in to pay their bills, right?
Mm-hmm.
And to talk about trees. Okay. And how many people do you think come in each day?
Like I said, it's less than 20. It averages probably a 15 to 18.
So that's for everything?
Other than development services.
Okay, other than development services, okay.
Thank you. I have a question for Director Castro, actually. And Director Cox, you can, you can maybe answer this. What is the, and we brought this up the first time we discussed this, you can come down, is how, how, you know, reasonable or doable is it to actually just close development services and keep the rest of City Hall open? And I know practically it's very tough, because they can see you across the counter, and they know you're there. But, you know, I had proposed that last time, saying, you know, maybe we can close development services, because I do think it's a huge impact on your department, Director Castro. But, you know, I do, I do want to know, is it practical? If we said, we're going to open up City Hall for those hours that we close, 7:30 to 11, but we're going to keep development services closed, and would that work?
Absolutely. And I can explain, but I'll just answer...
Mayor, I would include Public Works. Public Works Development Services actually work hand-on-hand, because you go to Public Works for your grading permits and things. So I would, I would include those two together. So I would include those two together.
Yeah, and some, it's a good point.
And really, we do have quite an activity at the public counter. A lot of the contractors understand now that they receive their help after 11:00 a.m. We, not only do we get counter, we also get a lot of phone calls. People come to ask questions just about, you know, additions, building additions, can they do this? What is it required? It would help us, we have, you know, research, write reports, general plan changes, that when we're beginning a report, and this is just giving you an example, you know, the hourly or every 20-minute interruption, and, you know, those aren't interruptions, that's customer service. But it does impact the work and completing that work on an, in an efficient manner when there are those interruptions. When it's uninterrupted and we're able to work with people at the counter, then it's, you know, there's a clear separation of those tasks.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Oh, I have a question. Wasn't, for the general plan, wasn't a part-time planner hired to help alleviate some of that stress from the development services during the general plan process?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open up for public comment? And we'll open up for public comment. Our grand marshal.
I'm Pat Alcorn, Mayor Harvethian, and councilmembers. I wasn't planning to talk tonight, but I just watched the June 5th Planning Commission meeting just before I came down, and I thought, came to me of a way to allocate staff time in a more productive manner to allow the city buildings to open at a reasonable time. And that's the rec center, too. It's closed. Last Thursday, the Planning Commission spent about three-quarters of an hour or more discussing the design of the Park House building addition. In the course of the discussion, our city manager stated there were approximately six meetings between the Senior Commission and the Community Services Commission, and I attended three of them. When the project came to the Community Services, we asked that it be brought back for more information. The second meeting, the commission voted no to the project. This did go to City Council, and the Community Services Commission were charged to make another go at the project. Third meeting, a different approach was taken, and the commission voted to approve the concept of a storage room to be placed on the Hart Park House building. This went to City Council for approval and subsequently came to the Planning Commission, who asked to be brought back for more information. Thursday, the Planning Commission again asked for more information. I can't even begin to count the number of staff hours that's been placed on this project, both in preparing reports, staff reports, including drawing, photos, staff time it takes to attend the commission meetings and council meetings. This was not a necessary project. Seems to me that there should be a priority when it comes to things brought before the commission and council. Budget, water, streets, regulations should be a priority. If the staff sees that a project like the Park House will take up more time than it should, then the project should be taken, tabled until a better time. This will give the staff time to do what they need to do within the city. I understand the Park House project will be under the supervision of Bruce Enman. Does he not have a better use of his time than to supervise the construction of a storage room? I use this example because it just came up, but there are other projects that have required the same amount of time and energy, and it would be nice to complete, but not now. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other comments? And we'll bring it back for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I did get a comment from Director Snyder. There was a question asked earlier about the cost savings of being closed. She correctly reminded me that part of the reasons that we reduced our hours was because of a reduction in staffing. So technically speaking, the cost savings is that staff that we're no longer paying. And in the front counter finance department alone, it's the equivalent of one full-time, one FTE. And as you're aware, citywide, in all the departments, we're looking at about 10 FTEs over the last four years. So that is a dollar amount of savings per se.
Thank you.
And if you want the number to that, that full-time position generally runs about $80,000.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Delmar?
I wanted to bring this up because during the campaign and walking the streets, people did complain time and time and time and time that they can't get here until 11:00, that every Friday it's closed, that the amount of hours that they have access to City Hall and its services is very inadequate. And I did a little poll of all the cities around here, and kind of looked at their staffing ratios, and they're about the same as Sierra Madre. And yet somehow they're able to be open eight, nine hours a day, some of them five days a week, some of them just four days a week. So I don't think it's a matter of, we just need to open the doors and staff doesn't get their work done. And I've discussed this, we've discussed this during our salary meeting. I think you need to look at the whole organization and make it more efficient. I think perhaps people that you have at the front desk and the counter at development services, you can reorganize them so you don't have someone who's doing, you know, water bills or database entry at the front desk constantly being interrupted. So I just think it's a whole mindset that we need to come to now, saying, we really need to provide customer service, we really need to be accessible. People try to get to City Hall when the hours before they go to work, because coming home, you never know when you're going to get home. The 11 o'clock, I know, I know contractors complain that they can't get here until after 11:00, because a lot of contractors work at 7:00 or 7:30. Just personal experience, we had to wait for the, you know, my contractor was upset when they did our remodel just a little while ago, because it's unheard of in their line of work that City Hall isn't open in the morning. So I understand that you had a reduction in staff. I understand the pressures of not having uninterrupted work. But I think there is a compromise. I think there is a way to organize the way staff works. I think there's a way to organize the hours, that perhaps you can have a couple hours of uninterrupted work for certain departments, where they can get that work done and concentrate. So I think there's a way to do it. I just don't think it's right for us not to have, for our residents not to have access to City Hall, except for maybe four or five hours, four days a week.
Thank you. Who wants to go next?
At least a question or a comment.
Oh, no, this is a comment. Questions are done.
Yeah, I echo what you're saying, Councilmember Delmar, about the public's view of this. You know, frankly, when you're going door-to-door and trying to strike up conversations with people, they're not asking a whole lot of detailed questions about the city. There are a few things that were on people's minds this particular spring, and some of them were the same as two years ago when I did it, and some of them were different. This was not necessarily on the minds of everyone I talked to, but when I found serious people who seemed to be really in touch with what was going on in the city, they did seem to bring this up. And I think that it's, it's not just a matter of practicality in terms of what we need to get done, because things need to get done. But it's also a matter of, I think it's symbolically important that our city government is seen to be open for business. So I'm struggling with this, because we have taken a hit in terms of a cost to achieve this, and it looks to me like, I'm not going to say how you'd go about reorganizing this, but it would seem like that would be an obvious option, but I'm not so sure that that's going to necessarily get the job done. I'm not so sure that we, if we open these hours up, that we're going to see the same kind of productivity. I mean, we hope to, certainly, but I think that that might be in the, that's an iffy question. So in concept, I like the idea of opening up the hours. I like to know more details about how we're actually going to get things done.
I guess this is for all the newbies that did hear a lot of the concerns from folks in town. And it's very real. And just like Councilmember Goss was saying, it may not have been on everybody's mind, but it was on a lot of people's mind. And I think it's our responsibility to respond to the concerns of our residents and our constituents. With that being said, I had asked this during one of our committee meetings, can we even consider just maybe not opening set 7:30 as we used to? Can we consider even 8:30 or 9:00, where we still have some morning hours? We still can allow for some time of staff to attend to their work. I heard one of the concerns was when, when there was cutbacks in the FTEs and it was affecting the productivity of the staff, one issue that came up was, I think it was the water bills. Typically, people are used to getting their water bills every 60 days, and it started pushing to 75 days and to 80 days, 90 days. And that also impacts all of the residents, too. So we don't want to have those long periods of time. We want to ensure that we are doing it the right way and that we are getting it in timely manner. And also, considering what our streamlining and effectiveness in the workflow, I mean, that obviously is an important piece to it. But with that being said, can we consider 9:30, or a 9:00 opening time, 8:30 opening time? So it's a shorter period of time, obviously, that staff can attend to their work, but still allowing for the residents, people that are wanting to get their work done with their contractors done, and that contractors can come into planning. And, you know, I don't know, I know the possibility of closing the development department, that came up, but I also think that the development department is part of what the needs are for the residents also, is because when they have people like their contractors coming in, trying to get a job done, they need to go to planning. So to throw that out there to the council, if that's a consideration that we can take into account as we're having the discussion.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
I'll just say, you three that have been knocking on doors, you have more recent intel than I have, so I take that very seriously, if that's what you feel, that the folks out there, it's important to them, and as Councilmember Goss says, it is symbolically important. I have received phone calls on it myself. So I'm willing to, I'm willing to go along with suggestions, but how are we going to get to something? Are we going to ask a city manager to go back and come forth with a proposal? Or do any of you have a proposal?
I have some thoughts, you know, and we can, we can have a discussion up here, but when we originally discussed this item, the previous council, you know, I struggled with it, I was against it, and I thought that it would kind of end up here, where we'd hear from a lot of folks that just weren't very happy that they couldn't get to City Hall before 11:00. And as I made the point then, you know, working individuals trying to get to the office in the morning, you know, they were essentially going to be closed out of City Hall. And I think that that's kind of what we saw, that people just weren't able to get in the City Hall, the hours were too restrictive. And, and there was this perception that City Hall was closed for business. You know, I think it's a different world now than when I was making those arguments. I do think that with the sun setting of the UT, we do have to consider, how sustainable is this? We're going to be talking about the budget in the next couple of months, and it's inevitable that layoffs are on the table, and that less people might be working in City Hall than are working here today. So I am, I'm, again, open to revisiting the hours and opening the City Hall in the morning again. However, I would like to talk about the parameters. You know, one, to me, I don't know if we should do it past, or we could do it, and then kind of agree now, that once the UT sunsets, and once we actually talk about the reorganization of our staff and reorganization of City Hall, I think we're going to have to revisit this, obviously. I think that this has to be on the table, is something that we, that we could go to to save money, and also to increase productivity. So to me, if we are going to make a decision tonight, you know, to me, it's really a short-term decision. It's maybe over the next year that we still have the UT at 10%. And two, I feel pretty strongly that development services isn't the same as the rest of City Hall. Now, I, again, the last council meeting that we talked about this, I was a big proponent of coming up with some sort of creative solution, like closing development services until 11:00 and keeping the rest of City Hall open. At the time, there was pushback, and no one really thought that that would be practical. I think it would be practical, and to me, development services is just buried right now, for various different reasons. I mean, all the different projects coming through, I really do think it's better to have our staff with a little bit of downtime in the morning in development services, and we can talk about Public Works, too. But to me, it is important to have the doors open. However, I do think we need to be realistic, that if development services is going to be, you know, open for service as early as 7:30, things are just going to be much more backed up in front of the Planning Commission, backed up for the general plan, things getting to us. And I think that that is something that I'm not willing to, that I'm not willing to do. And I said at the time, I would rather hire more people to get the work done, rather than close City Hall. And it doesn't sound like we're going to hire more people. So to me, you have to make a, you have to make a cut somewhere. So I would be, you know, and this is just a proposal, and we can talk about it, but I would be in favor of opening up City Hall hours again, at least until we see a change in the budget due to the sunset of the UT. But I would propose that development services is exempt from that, and that they keep the current hours. And that's just my idea, so.
I would like to comment on that. One of the cities that I polled, their development services do have different hours, they open an hour before City Hall.
That's right.
And, and again.
Danny, see how we treat you? See?
And again, you have to look at productivity and say, I don't think that 100% of the lack of productivity is due to the fact that they're responding to customers. If we're only getting 20 people in City Hall a day. So productivity may be contributed to being at the counter, but I think productivity can be addressed in a lot of different areas. Besides that, for development services, I would say if I was running that department, you have someone who's at the counter, and people may have to wait a little bit. Your director has a door, he can close his door if he needs to get work done and not come to the counter. Same with our senior planning person. So there are ways to address it. You can have people that are up front there with the customers and those that are in the back doing the project work. So there's a lot of different avenues that we can do. I think for a long time, City Hall was very open, and people just kind of walked in and expected that they could see anybody. Maybe that's not the case anymore. But people should be able to come in and get the services they need, a permit, a yard sign permit to pay their water bills. Those types of things, you can have dedicated people to do, and that's their job. They're dedicated to serve that customer population. And then you can deal with your productivity other ways. You might want to talk about combining your library and community services, maybe having our community service person up at the front desk in City Hall, so she can do some community service work, as well as help alleviate the front desk. The water bill person, you want to take them off the front desk when it's that crunch time, make them someplace else so they can get that dedicated work. So there's a lot of different ways that you can increase productivity without closing down the customer service. And I would like to be able to do that.
I think you're probably right, but I think that you reach a point of diminishing returns, and we are short on staff. And we are looking at very significant budget cuts coming up very soon. So I do tend to concur with the mayor on this, on, at least on this small point, that this, whatever we do is likely to be a temporary measure, because when we're looking at more stringent cuts coming in the future, I think everything's going to have to be on the table. And this would be something that I would expect to be there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, I think everybody, it sounds like we have somewhat of a consensus that we've got to do something different with the hours. And so again, the question is, how do we get there? There's probably a lot of different ways to do it. I, you know, personally, I think city manager, it's your job to, if we just give you a policy direction, we want hours open more, we might detail that a little bit, you're going to have to just do what you have to do, whether it's going to cost more or less. If you feel that Councilmember Delmar's suggestions can be implemented, then do it. If you can't, you've still got to just do what, comply with the policy direction that we're going to wind up with here. So what do we want to do?
Well, yeah, and one of the options is to have our staff, Director Cox, and along with the city manager, come back with a few different proposals that we could vote on at a future meeting. We could try to give direction tonight, which might take a few more minutes, but I'm willing to have the discussion, if we think we can come. I think we do have consensus on we need to do something, but in terms of ironing something out, a little bit more, a little bit more ironclad, I guess. I'm open to suggestions from the council. If we want to just have staff come back based on the consensus, I'm happy to do that. I think- I think we will then have to vote on something though, I would think. So, that just means another discussion at a future council meeting. What does everyone think about that?
I think we've given enough direction and I think the city manager and department heads can come back with some things. And I think maybe, I'm ultra-sensitive to this coming from the HR perspective, so, you know, I have all these things going on in my head. And, you know, one of the things you might want to talk about is stagnating to, you know, Monday and Tuesday, you're open in the mornings. Wednesday and Thursday, you know, you're open later in the afternoons. So, there's a million different ways that you can do this. But the most important thing is, we want to provide customer service and we want to be here for our residents. And so, that's number one priority. And then number two is our productivity. And again, when you look at all the surrounding cities that have the ratio that we have in staffing, somehow they manage to do it. So, I know it's possible to do that. I know it is possible. You just have to be creative and you have to kind of think out of the box.
So, I'm open to, you know, asking the city manager to come back with different ideas and understanding though, I think we do need to move on this sooner rather than later. I just don't want this to be prolonged also, especially considering that if we have to rethink this when the budget in '14 or in '15 and '16 budget, if we have to reconsider what staffing looks like altogether, I just don't want to prolong this because we do know that we still have our 10% UT. We know where our budget is at this point, that we should move on this quicker and not prolong it. So, I'm open to giving direction at this point and coming back with some different ideas. And I guess the general impact of what those different scenarios would look like. And I know we may not have dollar impacts, but just to give us a sense of if we do the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, if we do the development that's closed, if we do open at a later time, just so that we have an idea of what we're comparing.
City manager, do you think you could come back with some, a couple of different alternatives for us?
Of course, of course.
Is that what you guys want to do?
Yeah, it sounds fine with me. And I do think, and to Councilmember Del Mar's point, I mean, I do think, and a couple of the council members brought it up, tell us what the data says, you know, if we are going to come up with some sort of schedule that does vary on a Tuesday or a Thursday and staying open later on like a Thursday, but opening up earlier on a Tuesday, just make sure that we have, you know, an idea as to why we're doing that, you know? Because on a Thursday, you know, more people tend to come later. Or, you know, I want to make sure that if we are coming up with an alternative schedule, that it really does, you know, reflect why or when and how people are coming into City Hall. And I know you will do that. I know you'll bring back the data, so.
And one other thing, we're talking about this, we're also talking about the telephone. So, you may be able to have a dedicated person answering the telephone even when the City Hall is closed to answer questions when people call City Hall because that is a big complaint that people call and they can't reach anybody or get a live person to ask a question. And something just as simple as that, one person each day is responsible for answering the phones, really could go a long ways in providing customer service.
And just to Mayor Potem's question earlier, I'm sure once things do get online, when you can start applying, that will obviously, hopefully, decrease the need for people to walk in. When is the estimated time for that to be completed where folks can...
We don't have an estimated time yet. I can include that in the report that comes back to the council. I can tell you that when the hours changed, we had a 31% bump in online water bill payments because you could do that online now. So, that was one big change we saw.
Which was a positive.
So, what you're saying is true, is we put more things online that people can do. It provides customer service also and people will find a way to get their business done. So, I can include that on my staff report.
Thank you. And I think you don't need anything else, Madam City Manager, right?
No, I don't.
Okay. We'll move on to item number five, UT Commercial Business Cap Resolution 14.2. And...
That is me.
City manager.
Let me just finish one quick note so I don't forget to close out the last item. Item number five is a request from Councilmember Del Mar that the city council discuss the city's utility users cap for commercial businesses. In March of 2014, the city council approved Resolution 14-22, which is attached to your staff report, that established a financial cap of $400 annually on a commercial businesses' UUT on their water and sewer bill. It only applied to water and sewer bills, not all the other utilities that a business would use. The ordinance provides for a reimbursement process, so once annually, almost like your taxes, January to December, then by March, the business would submit a reimbursement form showing how much they paid in UUT and any amount above the $400 would be refunded to the business. At the time the staff report was prepared and I did relook at the estimates. We are still estimating that the amount of potentially, because business would need to request the reimbursement, it's not automatic. So, we don't know who's going to actually do the paperwork to request it, but we are estimating somewhere in the $2,000 to $6,000 range of UUT that would be reimbursed and potentially of current businesses, again, because we don't know who might be moving into town. But if current businesses, at the time the resolution was passed, half a dozen businesses maybe could potentially reach that threshold. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Del Mar?
So, it's the Del Mar Show tonight, it sounds like. I wanted to bring this back for a couple of reasons. When it went through, didn't make a lot of sense to me then, still doesn't make a lot of sense to me now. We're in a drought. We don't want to encourage people really to use water. We certainly don't want to incentivize them to use water. I just think we don't know what the impact is going to be. We haven't had, we don't know how much money we would be losing by doing this. We don't know how much the businesses, what their water uses is going to be. I just think the message that we're sending is the residents, you need to conserve. We're in a drought, businesses, you know, we're going to give you some payback. And I just think we're in a drought, we're in an emergency situation and this is not the year to do this. Perhaps when we have water, we might want to reconsider it and be generous, but right now, we should not be generous with our water.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just comment, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by water. I mean, this is just, I don't think that cap is really going to incent perhaps six users to use more water.
No. It's the message. It's the message that, you know, we're going to cap them, we're not going to, we're going to cap them at a certain, you know, at $400. That's the most that you'll have to pay. And at a time of a drought, I just don't think you want to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for public comment? And I'll open it up for public comment.
I too did not agree with the cap for the downtown business district, which, right here in your agenda, you're doing rough math. A moment ago, you spoke about the city is going to be losing money because of City Hall hours. But now, with a cap, you're willing to lose money. So, where's the clarity? Yes, we all want to help our downtown business district, but I really don't feel this is the right way. So, look forward to hearing why you feel it is right, that on one hand, it's okay to spend a lot of money.
Thank you, Barbara Lee. Any other comments? Seeing none? Bring it back for discussion.
And I, you know, I'll start on this one just because I was one of the council members that voted for this. There was three of us, there was two against, Mayor Potem was against it. And, you know, at that time, there was, there was disagreement amongst the council members as to whether this made sense and the type of message, as Councilmember Del Mar was saying, what kind of message was this sending to the residents when we were asking them to potentially pay for 10% UT going forward and, but for some reason, giving, you know, the businesses a break. And I said then, and I'll say now, that the reason I did it was because I have spent the last two and a half years on our business recruitment committee. And we were constantly thinking of ways to incentivize new businesses to come in and particularly businesses that might not come unless they are incentivized. And I thought that this was one tool to do that. Now, I think that that was, again, a different world. I was pretty confident that the UT would pass and that 10% would be the rate going forward. And again, the businesses are essentially getting the cap that I was hoping that they would get and that's the UT going down to 8% and then 6%. You know, I don't think that there's a huge concern from my perspective on the financial impact of this. I don't think it was in effect long enough to really know. It was two and a half months. We don't know whether it was two, whether it would be 2,000 to 6,000, it might be more, it might be less. We don't even know if businesses would really take advantage of it. So far, no one has. But I do think you do send a message when you pass this. And that is, on the one hand, businesses are going to be treated differently than our residents. And I think that is something that you have to consider. And I was okay with that message because I do think that businesses are treated differently than our residents. I think that businesses bring in tax revenue, sales tax revenue. They provide a sense in downtown that we have a downtown that is healthy. And we went for a while there where that just wasn't the case and that we were very worried about having new businesses come in. Now, we have luckily had a lot of new businesses open up shop. We do, we have a ribbon cutting tomorrow, for example. So, I think that, you know, we're doing a good job and the economy's probably helping us in bringing businesses back into downtown. You know, that being said, I don't think that this business cap, you know, practically is a huge deal. And I'm okay revisiting it and even having it repealed. But I do think that, to me, this was a tool that we were trying to use to, you know, bring in businesses. And Mayor Potem, I believe, and a couple others, you know, just didn't agree with that. And I don't think that they're necessarily wrong, you know? I mean, I think it was just a difference of opinion. So, I don't mind reconsidering this, so. Open to hear what everyone else has to say.
I'd be fine bringing in businesses using some other way besides our water.
Understood.
So, what I was going to say too is that we take them for granted because they're here, but they are providing services for us and products. And the whole impact of that business community is part of what Sierra Madre is. A lot of people like to come and visit us because of that. So, I don't think we want to send the wrong message to the business community by saying, "Well, you're not that important now." On the other hand, the message that I got when I was going door to door, this happened right towards the end of the campaign, was what are they doing? Because they, the UT was a big issue and whether their people are for the UT or against the UT, they did see this differential treatment as being a very significant concern. And so, I do think that we need to do something about it, but I also want to make certain that the business community here in town knows that we value them, we want to do everything we can to retain them and recruit other quality businesses for Sierra Madre. And we ought to find other ways to do that and we ought to be thinking about that. And I know we are. I know we are doing that in your committee, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to see other ways we can support our business community and recruit businesses to come in. And yes, hopefully that with the economy now, that we'll just see an upswing there. I guess in essence, what we, an expectation we have for the residents should be the same expectation we have for the businesses with respect to this cap. So, I would be in support of repealing the existing policy.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to repeal the UT Commercial Business Cap Resolution 1422.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? That is unanimous. Item number six, recommendation to award a professional services contract to, I'm going to butcher it, Baribo? All right. Baribo Environmental Engineering. And Director Immon?
Thank you. As we stated earlier this evening, the city switched water sources on October 9th from our traditional groundwater to water imported from the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District via NWD. Since that date, a number of our water customers have received discolored water from their faucets and fixtures. That coloration is the result of rust and minerals having been freed from the inside of public and private water distribution and plumbing systems. The color has ranged from yellow to brown depending on the concentration of rust being discharged. When we started this, experts predicted that the temporary discoloration would be eliminated within three to six months. Although there has been little reported water discoloration from much of the community, there are still neighborhoods that are plagued with water discoloration continuing today more than seven months after the transition. The Water Department's goal and frankly, a pride, has always been serving the best quality water to the community that we possibly could. To that end, even before we started taking this imported water and continuously through June 10th, 2014, Water Division staff has done everything it could to resolve this water quality issue. Rather than waiting for the three to six months to see if the problem would resolve itself as we were told it would, staff has been active in relieving the problem. And the staff report does list a number of items that we've done and I don't, I'm not going to go through all those. And in depth, Water Superintendent Jose Reynoso is here tonight and can answer questions about some of those things if you have those questions. But since October, we've been adding sites to our monthly hydrant flushing program to try and eliminate the discolored water from our systems. In November, we met with ranking executives from NWD, from their water quality section, who informed us that we were doing all the right things in your estimation. In January, we increased our hydrant flushing program with 29 sites being flushed weekly. And as of first of this month, we're up to 33 sites being flushed. We've installed blowoffs in different locations to provide means of relieving water from the systems. And in February, we began contacting firms that specialize in water treatment because it became apparent to us even then that this water discoloration was not going away as quickly as we had hoped, as quickly as we'd been advised. One of those companies, Sterling Water Technologies, offered a water treatment solution, that of adding zinc or the phosphate to the water to eliminate the rust from being discharged into the system. In March, Water Division staff began testing that solution by injecting that into a closed system at the maintenance yard. Essentially, they experimented on themselves rather than on the community.
Very nice of them.
Thank you for that.
And what they found was that it worked in their particular situation. Whereas they were getting discolored water on a regular basis every morning and often throughout the day, within two days, the water was flowing clear in the facilities at that location. However, we're not comfortable with simply jumping into that and putting that in the water supply for the entire community without further study. Again, we're not interested in experimenting on Sierra Madre. On October, excuse me, April 21st, we contacted Dr. Eileen Baribo, I'm going to butcher this any number of times, I'm sorry. She was recommended to us by Sterling Water Technologies to specifically evaluate the use of the zinc phosphate citywide to eliminate the red water from the system. And in April, we began flushing the entire water system. Now, in addition to the continuing discoloration issue, there is another issue that we do need to address. And if we're going to be looking at water chemistry at this time to ease the discoloration... And if we're going to be looking at water chemistry at this time to ease the discoloration, we have to also look at the phenomenon called nitrification, which is something that happens with any water treated, disinfected with chloramine. We have had water sampling going on since, since October 9th at these hydrants where we've been flushing the system. And one of the things that we have been testing for is chlorine residuals at those locations. One of the indicators of nitrification is a drought in chlorine residual. And one of the reasons we've been testing for that from October 9th is to make sure that we were not seeing nitrification start to begin in our system. Understand, nitrification is a process. It doesn't start at 6 o'clock on Tuesday and end at 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday. It's a process that takes time. What we're doing is monitoring for something that could possibly develop. At the present time, we have found traces, we've found evidence that this could be developing, and that is one of the things that we want to look into further at this time. We were provided with what's called a nitrification action plan as part of our metropolitan connection. All systems that use this water have this NAP in place. It is required by State Health Department. One of the things that we want our consultant to do is essentially a peer review of this nitrification action plan to make sure that it contains everything that we need to have it contain for our specific water supply. There are, we talked to two firms, the council water subcommittee and staff interviewed both firms and came to the conclusion that the best match for Sierra Madre, for the three portions of the scope of work that we're looking at, would be Dr. Baribo or BEE for Baribo Environmental Engineering. And I would like to introduce her this evening. Before we do that, before she gets into her brief PowerPoint discussion, I want to indicate too that there are three items that we're looking at. First, we're looking at a corrosion control study. This is specifically to address the discoloration issue. We're going to do the review of the nitrification action plan. We are going to also evaluate the use of blended water, that is mixing our well water with the imported water, or full-time use of chloramine disinfection, which as you'll recall is one of the items on the city council's strategic plan. The staff's recommendation for this evening would be to approve a professional services agreement in an amount not to exceed $45,539 with BEE for engineering services to provide these items that I just mentioned, and also approve additional appropriations, $5,011 for a total of $50,550 from water fund reserves. This is not a budgeted project, it was not considered or known to be something you would need to do when this two-year budget was adopted. And so with that, I would like to introduce Dr. Baribo, who has got a PowerPoint presentation for you. She can also answer questions about water quality, about the water discoloration, if you have those. She can answer questions about nitrification. She's prepared to go into that in more detail. And I also have Deputy Director Semino and Water Superintendent Reynoso here to answer their questions. So with that, I would like to introduce-
Thank you, Director.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight, Mr. Baribo, Senator, and the council. I am Ellen Baribo, and I'm pleased to be here tonight and talk about this proposal that we submitted recently to the city, and to look, as Mr. Inman mentioned, about those three issues, corrosion, nitrification, and blending of different water sources. So, just a little bit of background here, and you have already heard tonight, the drought condition actually have forced the city to shut down its groundwater wells and start importing water from the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. And that is actually water that is treated by the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. What's important to observe here is that the city's groundwater is actually very different in terms of water quality from the water from the Metropolitan Water District. So, different in multiple parameters, but also in terms of the disinfectant residual that is used. Metropolitan uses chloramine as distribution system residual disinfectant, and the city uses free chlorine as final disinfectant. And so, because of these differences, there's different challenges that can be seen in the distribution system. One of them, unfortunately, that you have experienced, is the appearance of red and yellow water events which are related to corrosion. And also, potentially, nitrification can also be a drawback of the use of chlorinated water. And finally, when we blend water with two different disinfectant residuals, there can be some issues that are, that can generate from that. So, the proposal presented is going to address these three issues. So the project was separated into four tasks, as you can see here, so the corrosion part of the nitrification, and blending of both water sources, and I will talk about each of them separately over the coming slides. So starting with the corrosion project, that part actually was separated into, separated into four subtasks. The first one is to assess the causes and the extent of the corrosion problem. And to do that, what we're proposing is to conduct a desktop analysis, looking at water quality data that the city has already collected. And this is important because there's many parameters that affect the corrosion and can influence corrosion. And so it's important to step back and look at those data and be able to understand what's happening and be able to, be able to, to identify some of the, the causes of the nitrification issue. Now, as much as task 1.1 is going to give us some information-
Yes.
Is this better?
No.
Yeah, I don't think so. It needs to be closer.
Okay, is this better? Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so we said for the corrosion, the first part will be to look, to do a desktop study to examine the water quality parameters that influence corrosion, because there's many of them actually. And then, you know, as much as that is going to give us an idea of potential corrosion control methods, when we look at corrosion, it's also important to test it, a little bit like the city has done here at a very, very small scale in one of their buildings, but because there's so many parameters that influence corrosion, and also because the distribution system material comes into play, the way the system is operated also comes into play, so it's important to look at that into a control condition. And so this is what task 1.2 is proposing. It's actually to do what we call a coupon testing to assess it at the bench scale. Then, after that, I will go right away to task 1.4 here, and the deliverable of this part of the project is actually a corrosion control study report. And what we are proposing is that this report will already meet the recommendation of the regulators, so that the city can already turn it to the regulatory agencies should they request it. Now, to be able to produce such reports, we have to address other issues, and this is what task 1.3 will do. And so task 1.3 will address cost secondary effect, reliability, flexibility, and compatibility with all the water sources, to make sure that the end deliverable addresses all the different issues that need to be looked at when we look at a full corrosion control The second part of the project is nitrification. And I'd like it here perhaps to step back one minute and to see, okay, we have, we have heard that nitrification is one of the main drawbacks of using chlorinated water. So then perhaps the question to ask is, why do we use chlorinated water? And so, and there's actually many advantages to chlorinating water. One of the, the first advantage is because it's a much more stable disinfectant than free chlorine. Another disadvantage is also because it forms lower concentrations of some of the regulated disinfection byproducts. These are chemicals that are found, that are formed when disinfectants react with organic material, and some of them have toxic characteristics. And so chloramines actually forms none or very little concentration of those chemicals. And another big advantage of chloramine, using chloramines, is the fact that it produces also less taste than odor. Now, of course, there are disadvantages, and we've heard about some of them. Nitrification is definitely one of them. The fact also that, under certain conditions, chloramines may not be as good disinfectant as free chlorine, and also, I believe also customers have already heard about the fact that pet fish may also be affected by chloramines. And so you can see that there's also disadvantage to using chlorinated water, but overall, the advantage, advantages are, are greater than the disadvantages. So, going back to the main disadvantage, which is nitrification, what nitrification is, it actually comes from the, the release of ammonia from the chloramine molecule as the chloramine decomposes in the water. What does nitrification do? It's actually responsible for increases in nitrite concentrations and potentially nitrate concentration as well. It's responsible for decrease in disinfectant residual, and now when the, the disinfectant residual decrease, the water becomes more susceptible to bacterial growth. It's also possible to see other water quality parameters changing due to nitrification, as you can see here on the slide. Nitrification is caused by many parameters, a little bit like corrosion, so it's something that needs to be examined thoroughly. And it's also caused by distribution system operation and maintenance. It's important to say that many of the retailers of Metropolitan Water District that use chlorinated water have already experienced nitrification, so this is not something that is new here. And it's also important to mention that there are no direct health effect of nitrification. It's more like kind of the side effect of nitrification that if left unattended, that can degenerate the water quality to a point where issues could happen. So it's important to address it rapidly before water quality starts changing. So to do this part of the project, what we are proposing is first to look at, use the existing data to look at the occurrence of nitrification, and to see, has it happened? Where has it happened? And what areas of the distribution system are more, more vulnerable to it? And what are the causes of nitrification in terms of specific water quality parameters? So this will be done at the desktop. The second part will be to, to review and to tailor the nitrification monitoring and control plan that the city has already received, and tailor it to its own water quality and its own condition, and its own distribution system characteristic and distribution operation. And it's also important in task 2.3, another aspect that will be looked at, is to develop preventive measures against nitrification, so it doesn't develop, and also to look at corrective measures if it were to be detected in the distribution system. One important point to consider is that these projects are interrelated, I may have mentioned that at the beginning, so the recommendations from the corrosion control study are likely to affect nitrification. So it's important to look at those aspects altogether. And the deliverable for this part of the project will be an updated and tailored nitrification monitoring and control plan, which will address several aspects, the background on nitrification, regulation, regulatory issues, a thorough monitoring program to include monitoring parameters, monitoring sites at which frequency we're monitoring, and who's responsible, and so forth. And clearly highlighting nitrification prevention measures and corrective actions is also important. The nitrification action plan will also include, as I mentioned, corrective actions, but also the, with the action plan as a function of trigger levels of nitrification. So if you start detecting nitrification, your actions are going to be much more mild. If you see that it starts increasing, then you may have to apply more drastic actions. So it's important to tailor these, these actions, and, and also as a function of your distribution system. The last part of the project is to look at blending water sources. And this is important because depending on its groundwater allocation, the city may eventually want to start using its own water sources again, and there's a lot of good reasons for doing that, cost being one of them. Now, when we blend water with, with two different disinfectants, and as we've seen before, NWD water is chlorinated, whereas the city uses free chlorine, so when you, you blend these two disinfectants together, there is a potential here to what we, what we call breakpoint chlorination, breakpoint chlorinating the water. What that is, is when you breakpoint chlorinate water, you will see a rapid decline in disinfectant residual, and you will potentially see with that also the formation of taste and odor. And I want to spare here a little bit the chemistry of, of the, you know, the whole issue, but I, there, there's evidence that breakpoint is likely to occur in, in the city's distribution, distribution system, considering the, the water quality that the city is actually receiving, so both the quality of the imported water and its own, the quality of its own Certain systems have been able to blend successfully free chlorine and chloramine together in a distribution system, and so this is something that we are going to look at, is it possible? And to look into that, we're going to, we're going to, the first steps will address, is it possible to separate the service areas of the city so that one service area distributes free chlorinated water and other areas distribute chlorinated water? There's evidence that show that it might be very difficult in the city's distribution system, but I believe it's still important to step back and look into that. Another part of the, of that part of the project will be to look at conditions under which we blend both water source to avoid breakpoint chlorination. Can we blend them at different ratios? Can we blend them under different disinfectant dosages or under different pH, for example, so that we avoid this famous breakpoint that will degenerate the water quality? So, and the deliverable of this part of the project would be a technical memorandum that will highlight the key points of these two tasks, and also if we see that it's not possible either to separate the service areas of the distribution system, or it's not possible to avoid breakpoint chlorination, then what are the recommendations and what can the city do in this situation? Then the last task of the project is actually more like some, some house issues here, it's just about communication and project management, communication in terms of meetings with the city staff, and official meetings, but also more informal meetings. And rapidly here about the schedule, I just want to mention, and you believe you have the schedule in your handout, I just want to mention here that the schedule developed was actually quite conservative, and so it might be possible to accelerate some of the tasks. And so what we are proposing is to start with the corrosion study. This is, I believe, like a critical issue that needs to be addressed first. And, and then after that, very quickly to bring in the nitrification almost concurrently with the, with the corrosion issues, so that we can look at, at both somewhat in parallel together. And because blending is affected by the recommendation that will come out from the corrosion control study and from the nitrification study, so the blending issues will be looked at a little bit later on, so that we can start gathering a bit of recommendations and we know better what to examine under the blending scenarios. And this is what I would like to conclude here, so thank you very much for this opportunity, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Baribo. Any questions for the doctor or Director Inman?
I have a question for Director Inman, please. And, and thank you for that presentation. I, I don't know if you would articulate a good question for that. But if blending were to occur, when? But if blending were to occur, when and under what scenarios would we do that under?
We would blend if we had the opportunity to start using our wells. And under the current discussions with the water master and City of Arcadia, there is a possibility that we could start running our wells. We've been holding off doing that simply because we don't know for sure what the effect is going to be. But we do still have an amount of water that the water master and the adjudication will allow us to pump. But out of concerns for, as you said, breakpoint chlorination and some of the other issues that are involved, we have held off starting those wells. And also simply because we want to try and get this aquifer built back up as quickly as we can.
So if blending, it finds that it's fine, it's workable, and we have, we have the capabilities to do it, we may be doing it two years out, a year out?
We may be doing it at any time, frankly, but the longer we wait, the sooner, the quicker the aquifer is going to replenish itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a question for Dr. Barbeau. Is that how we pronounce your name?
One of us will guess right.
She said yes to me.
She said yes to me, too. It's not fair.
We can just call you Dr. B. So is it true that water chemistry changes over the years as well, or is it just pretty much remain the same? So once we do this study, we'll have all the chemistry information we need and our pHs and we don't have to worry about any more changes coming in the next couple of years to our water chemistry?
I would say, yes and no. You know, the water chemistry is always likely to change. Of course, we are under drought conditions and so under these, and many utilities, because of the drought, have seen their source water changing in quality. So I cannot tell you it's not going to change. And especially if you continue to import MWD water, MWD has two main water sources. And so they are also changing at their end, their water quality is also changing. Now, what we need to do during the study is to make sure that we look at the different scenarios here. And this is what we're proposed to do in terms of pH, in terms of different operating conditions, in terms of different blending ratios and so forth, to make sure that we cover potential future changes in water quality. And that definitely will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question for Director Inman, please. My, my antenna's up when I hear we have traces of nitrification in our system. I'd like to know more about that in detail. How much, where is it? What are the repercussions of that right now, here and now, in the short term?
All right. I can give you a little bit more detail in terms of what we have found. The existing nitrification action plan shows basically four levels. Level one is simply a background level of nitrates or nitrates in our system. That's .01 milligrams per liter. Level two is greater than .01 and less than or equal to .05. Level three, .10 to .15. And level four is .15 or greater. And level four is when the California Department of Public Health wants to be notified. At this point, I've been notified that the highest we have gotten was a momentary .09 that was dealt with. The water was taken out of the system, was flushed out of the system, and that level went back down. It is important to note that nitrate itself is found in our groundwater. So this is not something that is new to our system. It's, if you were to go to our annual water quality report for the last three years, it shows nitrate traces in our water system. It's something that we normally test for and report on a regular basis. So if, I think that Dr. Barbeau could get into the whole nitrification process much better, in much more detail than I can. So if you'd like more, we can.
So right now, at the level we are at or we're at, when we went up to 0.9, but it's down, we're not, we don't have public health issues right now.
There are no public health issues at the present time. That's one of the reasons why we're monitoring. When we see it, we get rid of that water immediately.
Yeah, and I have a follow-up question on that, but go ahead. Yeah, on the, just, I'm not a chemist, and so I have a couple of questions about nitrification, too. When you say that we've had trade, you know, we have traces of nitrate or nitrate is in our groundwater, is it, is nitrate the, the thing we have to be worried about from nitrification? Or is it the, the fact that when nitrification happens, you have bacteria that, that exists in the water, which is separate from nitrates, right? I mean, I'm trying to, how does nitrate fit in with nitrification?
I think we're, we're, in a way, we're sort of confusing terms. The concern we have about nitrification is the loss of residual disinfectant.
Disinfectant, exactly.
It's not so much the nitrate or the nitrite, it's the loss of residual disinfection. Because when you do that, when you lose that, then you have the opportunity for harmful bacteria to develop in the system.
Right. And I guess that, that base, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So as I indicated, there's always been nitrate in our system. It's in our groundwater. And it varies and the, the state allows .45 nitrate in our system. That's the MCL. And we've never even approached that level. The concern we have is about the loss of disinfectant, which is the result of nitrification. I hope that clarifies. If you want to.
Just to elaborate, just to elaborate quickly here on this, and Mr. Inman said very well, it's mainly the lack of, the decrease in disinfectant residual that can leave the water unprotected from microorganisms. Now, nitrification is a two-step process. So the first thing is formation of nitrite. And then if it's left unattended, then eventually another group of bacteria will form nitrate. And so it's actually one that goes into the other. And so there is a way to pick it up very quickly, you know, as soon as you start forming the nitrite, before it degenerate past that point. And this is why it's important to tackle the situation right now, before it starts happening in your system.
Follow-up question to that, then. You're starting out with the corrosion plan, why aren't we talking about the nitrification plan first?
Well, because of the, of the red and yellow water event, this, to me, is a customer compliance, not compliance, but customer satisfaction issue that needs to be dealt with very quickly.
Okay.
And I would only add to that because we don't have a nitrification problem. If we were having a significant problem, we were up at the phase three and four regularly, we probably would have put that first. But that really isn't our biggest issue at the moment.
Dr. Barbeau, I do have a question for you, too. Because I think when we met in the subcommittee, you also mentioned one other factor here that is coming into play is that the warm water, the higher temperature of the water. So I just wanted to make that point, that this is, you know, we're, we're on Colorado River water and this stuff comes over via the aqueduct. So my question is, we're pumping our groundwater, it pretty much stays at the same temperature all year, and we don't have this other additional thing to look out for in the summer, I suppose.
There's two issues. You are right with, with more constant water temperature with groundwater, but it's also the fact that your groundwater is free chlorinated.
Yeah.
It's not chlorinated.
Understand.
What triggers nitrification, what starts it?
That's right.
Is the decomposition of the chloramine that release ammonia. And ammonia is the food source for nitrifying bacteria that starts the nitrification process.
Yeah. Okay.
And so there's two issues there. Now, and you're very right, as the summer will, will start and temperature will increase and water will be warmer in the distribution system, especially in more remote areas, then nitrification is likely to become a greater issue because nitrifying bacteria thrive in, thrive in warmer temperatures. And so oftentimes in the spring, early summer, we see less of it. And then suddenly in August, September, October, this is where, when utilities in Southern California see a lot of nitrification happening.
Yeah. Okay, just another, you mentioned one of the work products would be a corrosion control report, and the purpose of that is to be able to submit it to regulatory agencies? Now, we haven't had a corrosion control report prior. I mean, is that something that's necessary? I mean, why, that part I just didn't understand.
Okay. One, there are, there's different ways to address the corrosion issue here. And considering what we've been seeing and the preliminary, you know, the tests that are ongoing and those that were done before also, it is very likely that this is, the city will need to use a corrosion inhibitor or to modify a little bit the water quality to make sure that the corrosion resorb and we don't see these red and yellow water events. Now, if you start modifying the chemistry from a, from a corrosion control standpoint, this is when the California Department of Public Health may require you to document why are you doing this?
Yeah.
And so they will do that, they will ask you a corrosion, a corrosion control study report. And so we're kind of basically anticipating here, in the event that CDPH asks you this report, what we're doing is we can, we can address it right away as we conduct the study, as we determine the best practice for, for the city. We can also elaborate the report at the same time, so that when they request it, it's ready for submission.
Okay. All right. One more question. You mentioned, you know, throughout the presentation, you used the term water quality. And I, I'm just wasn't sure if everybody understood. I don't think you mean quality in the sense of low or high quality, but the different chemical configuration is really what you're talking about, right?
Yes, it's water quality as a whole, basically, which is represented or characterized by many parameters.
Yes.
I mean, we may have, of course, temperature, you may have heard of pH, you may have heard of alkalinity, of hardness, of conductivity, or, you know, chemical constituents and so forth.
Yeah.
And so this is what I mean by water quality is, is kind of like the pattern of, of the whole water and the different parameters that, that indicate the, the quality of the water as a whole.
Okay. Because I, I think there's a perception that the water we take from the Metropolitan Water District is of low quality.
No.
Okay, well, I just.
It's a different quality.
It's different, yes.
It's different constituents, but it's not a lower quality.
It might be low quality when it comes out of your tap because of some of the problems we're having.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have one follow-up question. I noticed on your report that you're going to possibly do a sodium hydroxide to the connection, to the MWD connection. Has there been any testing up to this point on that pipe that was connected?
Yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Any other questions?
Not, not a chemistry-related question. I just had a question with respect to the proposal itself. And I, you know, I don't know how, how the, what we had requested to submit, but I just wanted to understand why we have the startup cost as a separate piece.
The startup cost is a separate piece because we really don't know, this is not a cost, this is a cost to have the water tested at independent labs, essentially. And we don't know how much of that testing we're going to need to do. So that's our estimate. And that's a separate cost we're going to be paying on top of the services provided because the doctor will not be doing the, the chemical testing of the water. We send that to an outside lab.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. We will open this up for public comment.
Good evening, Council. Debbie Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. And I must say, I am one of the people with the bright yellow water and my water stinks. And it is in my neighborhood, too. And I must say, I am rather confused about this presentation and about our whole problem with the water. I, I've heard that there are no public health issues, that's what Director Inman said. And yet what I'm also hearing is, and what I'm reading, is that our, our water is really unfit to drink. And I just cannot resolve the two. My dog is drinking bottled water because I'm afraid to give her water out of the tap. And is, are, is this problem limited to those of us that have yellow water or is it citywide? It sounds like it's citywide, but some of us have bigger problems than the other ones. And also, I'd like to know about the flushing of the hydrants and where does that water go? It seems like that's a tremendous waste along with the tap water, that those of us who have the yellow water have to keep running to get it clear. You could certainly redirect that hydrant water onto my lawn, which is dying. And also, I'm wondering as well, why we are considering spending $50,000 on a consultant? Did we not know about these problems ahead of time or these potential problems? And if the answer to that one is no, then why didn't we know? And lastly, I'd just like to comment that we are in a seven-year drought. And why can we not institute a building moratorium during our drought? And you might say, well, that's not connected, that's for the next issue. But actually, it is all more, more, it's all connected because more building will deplete our water supply even further. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie.
Barbara Lee Klein, so much of what Debbie said I agree with. Sitting back there, I'm thinking for this presentation, why now? So we know we're in a drought. I'm still thinking about, about council meetings on, would the amount of money was okay to redo the reservoirs and redo the wells? And I hope that this won't affect what's been done already with that particular area. That was very expensive. I also thought we were already blending the water, so I learned something new this evening. But I'm just not sure about spending this amount of money. To me, this, this sounds like we're expecting this to be permanent, what we're talking about right now. That's why we're doing this study. So I was on the assumption that, and yes, we're in a drought, I'm hoping El Nino will come, that we will go back to Sir Madre, having its groundwater replenished. But this sounds like it's, sounding like it's permanent. That's why the study is here. I'm going to start buying my dog's bottled water. I work in Lendell. They have these nice little machines, you pay 30 cents for a gallon of water, crystal geizer water. Maybe we should check into setting those around Sir Madre and homeowners can come down and fill up their, their water bottles, especially the ones that are getting yellow water. But I still ask, why now? And I do miss Fay Angus when she'd come down and speak on, on these different issues, her husband that worked for the Department of Water. If this is going to be a permanent for Sir Madre, then I can understand spending the water because the pipes just aren't mixing and meeting right with the corrosion. If we don't expect this to be a permanent water hookup here, then I'm not so sure that this is the time and place to do this particular study. So that's, that's my input.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other comments? Okay, bring it back for discussion. Anyone care to start?
Well, I'd like to address the questions that were from the audience here. I think it's important. I, I think Mr. Inman has said several times and throughout the presentation that some of the complaints are localized, not everybody is having the problem. And people with the problem are having the problem to different degrees. But I would just like to say, I just think it's, it's time that we have to solve this. And I'm going to switch to Ms. Lee's comment about whether this is permanent. And in my mind, from what I can see, it looks like we have the possibility that we're going to be importing water, perhaps for five years. Don't know how long. I mean, it's a, a personal goal I'd like to see happen, is that we get back to pumping 100% of our groundwater. But with the situation the way it is, we don't know how long it's going to take. And again, if you just do the quick math on this about the cost, is if we amortize the $50,000 over five years, over 3,500... the $50,000 over five years, over 3,500 utility connections, that's a cost of $286, or $2.86 per year each. So, I think it's worth it. You save a lot in bottled water if we were able to solve the problem, so I, I really think it's worth doing. The hydrants, again, that's been addressed time and time again. We, to run and flush the hydrants properly, the velocity has to come out of the pipe at a reasonable rate. If we pump it into a water truck, it slows it down, then we have to pump even more water. So if you're living above Grandview, it does get captured and goes back into the settling basins. If you go below, it goes into the storm sewer. Though, just, again, maybe Mr. Inman can explain this, but I'll go ahead and take a shot, but no, we did not know about this. I mean, chloramined water is new to us, so we did not know about the problems. And as Director Inman has said repeatedly tonight and in other presentations, various experts suggested to us that the problem would go away, and it has not gone away. That's why we're doing it now and not before, because we thought the problem was going to go away, but it didn't. The building moratorium is on the agenda for-
Your next meeting.
Our next meeting, so everybody come and, you know, we'll discuss that. But I think that answered all the questions there, but-
I would just add one more. This was not budgeted, because the city's budget was put together, I just went back in time to get this accurately. We put our current budget together in December of 2012.
Yeah.
And as you're all aware, in December of 2012, we had no idea that in October of 2013-
Thirteen.
We would be having to turn our wells off.
Yeah. Okay, just if I can, just while I'm on the, up to the mic here, I'll just continue with some other comments. Is, you know, all of us, and I'm sure the newer council folks here have been getting a lot of complaints as you were walking around knocking on doors, but I sure have gotten a lot of complaints about it. And I just don't think it's practical to just let this go any further. The concerns I have after listening to the, the presentations, because Councilman Goss and I are on the subcommittee, so we spent quite a bit of time with Dr. Baraboe and the other consultant as well. And even after going home and just doing a little online research myself, from just college chemistry, this stuff is way beyond what, I mean, I have the, the ability to comprehend. So, I appreciate the comment that we really don't want to be experimenting with our water system and the health and safety of our customers out there. As Director Inman said, too, is that, you know, we in Sierra Madre, all of us had tremendous pride in the quality of our water, and I think for $2.86 per customer, which you're not paying more, I mean, this is just, we're taking it out, but we're not charging you extra for this. I think this is money well-spent to try to get us back to a level of quality that we, we can accept and live with, even though this may not get us to the, what we perceive is the quality of our groundwater. And I do remember that we've had complaints, and I've made them before when we were on groundwater, about the smell of chlorine. So, nobody's complaining about that anymore, because we're not using chlorine, so we substituted one problem for another. But just personally, I'm just very impressed with the qualifications of Dr. Baraboe. And when we asked a lot of questions, and especially of Jose, he asked a lot of good questions, and Dr. Baraboe was very patient and thoughtful in her responses to the questions. I think she is eminently qualified to solve the problem. I'm extremely confident that we're going to be able to solve these problems, hopefully very, very quickly. So, and I just, when we compared her bid to the other alternative, she came in much less, and the other consultant, of course, is very good, too, but I think Dr. Baraboe is more than qualified to solve it, so that's, goes into why I think we would go with her rather than the other consultant. The other thing I liked about Dr. Baraboe also, is that she's doing all the work herself. The other consultant was kind of a high-level guy, and he had three levels of people that were going to do part of the work. So, I just appreciate the hands-on, and I think that's going to help us get to solutions much quicker this way, doing it this way. So, I certainly am in favor of going this direction, and I am optimistic that if we approve this, that we'll be back to a higher quality of water than we're receiving right now.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, please.
Where do I start? I got a real education in our water committee meeting the other day. We did a very thorough questioning of both of the engineer teams, I think we were, spent about an hour with each one of them, and I learned that I know just enough to get into trouble. But I think it's pretty obvious that the city is frustrated. Debbie, she took off now, but I was up at Valley Vista, I walked that entire street, and I talked to all kinds of people up there who were not using their water, and that was back in late February. So, there's no question that, that the city's been trying, trying its best using a variety of methods, and we're not there yet, and I think the, the next step is to bring in someone of, of Dr. Baraboe's caliber and her proven experience. Certainly, in comparing the contracts that we were looking at, the, the other team was significantly more expensive, and so I'm interested in saving money, too. We all are interested in saving money, but I don't think we want to be penny-wise and pound-foolish, this is our public water supply. And I think we need to be very careful about this, and I think we need to be proactive, and I don't think it's time to pinch pennies. So I'm strongly in support of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss.
I think I joked of the last three months that I would be doing a water dance, and maybe that will help me get me to city council. But yes, El Nino, all for it. I, I think ideally what we all want to do is get back to our own water source. However, in the meantime, we are dealt with these cards, and with consideration of importing MWD water, I think, I know at least for myself, and I'd imagine for a lot of residents, we, we want to make sure it's, it's safe, and we're being preventative, we're looking forward in the next upcoming years, depending how long we may have to import the water, and ensure that we are providing the best quality that we can with, with what we're given. So, considering the scope of work, and, you know, not being the scientist, but understanding that we want to see where we're at, where we're going to go, and the possibilities that we have, just so we can understand what, the different options we have to work with in the upcoming years. So, as much as I, I don't like the $50,000, but I, I think, I'm, if we look at it as a preventative way and looking at it upfront as to how we can move forward, I, I'm willing to support this also.
Councilmember Arizmendi.
I'm Delmar.
No, I said, thank you, Arizmendi. I know who you are.
Just making sure. So, I actually consulted my consultant. I do have a husband who's a chemist, and who has been in water treatment for about 25 to 30 years, and asked him to read this proposal. And his first comment was, a lot of this that we're doing now should have been done three or four months ago. And after reading this, my conclusion was, the reason that we haven't done a lot of this is we don't have that chemistry base that we need in the department, and we have never really had a need for it, because we've just been doing the chlorine, and it's pretty, simple, I don't want to say it's simple, but it's, it's stagnant, it stays the same. When you introduce chlorine, and when you start importing water from another district, and importing that water, it does create a lot of chemistry action in our pipes. And I do think that we need to have people who are able to do the testing and set the study and set the policy right now. More importantly, we're going to have to have someone in the six months when the doctor's gone as well. So I don't want people to think that we're just going to solve the problem and then it goes away. We're going to constantly, until we get off the imported water and not use the chlorine, we're going to have a constant problem with trying to adapt to the new water chemistry. So, we need to be looking forward on how we're going to be able to do that. It's a different treatment center now, so we need to make sure that we have those that can be able to do that. Then I put my HR hat on, after I did my chemistry hat, and actually, for the work that she's doing and the amount of hours, it's a really cheap hourly rate that we're getting her for, for this. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a good hourly rate. So, I really do think that we need to get the study going, find out why we have the red and yellow water. I got another picture from one of the residents, Kelly, who sends me pictures of her shower curtain, that used to be white, then it was kind of yellow, then it was kind of gold, and today it's brick red. So, we need to get started on this right away, and that's my comment.
And I'm in favor of this as well, and, you know, to the comments that this could have been started earlier, you know, as a council, I'll just give some perspective. We were, when we went over to MWD water, and we knew that it was going to be a different system, we made it very clear that staff was going to try to solve this in-house. And they consulted experts, we have two very able folks, three very able folks, that work directly on water issues on a daily basis. And if you've ever talked to Water Superintendent Reynoso, I mean, he knows, he knows these issues very, very well. And he might not be a PhD in chemistry, but he knows water systems very well, he knows chlorine in water systems very well. We were dealing with a water system that was frankly in the red. We went through a water rate increase and a sewer rate increase, because we couldn't even balance the water fund as it was. So the idea of trying to do this in-house and save money, but also make sure that we are doing everything right, was a huge concern for us, and we balanced that. We said, if we can't handle it in-house, then after a few months, we will go and hire an expert, and that's why we're here today. And so I don't want the public to think that we were somehow skating our, our responsibility, or that we weren't constantly and diligently looking at these issues. And we were. And we did a number of different things that were listed in the staff report. And I think that at this time, there's probably folks out there that think this is a waste of money, think that we shouldn't even spend it at this time. So, I think that there, that, that this is the right thing to do for the city, it's the right thing for the city to do now. And again, I think it's a bargain. I think it's a bargain considering everything that we're dealing with. The yellow and, and orange water is obviously an issue, and, and obviously getting ahead of the nitrification issue is, is also something that I think we should be, we should be really concerned with. So, to me, this is really a no-brainer, and I appreciate the, the presentation, I appreciate all the information, and, you know, I look forward to, to seeing the results, you know, and to being able to, again, drink my water without it being yellow and smelly, too. But, sure.
I just wanted to address nitrification. Nitrification happens when you have water that has chloramines in it. And I pulled up a lot of different reports, and Steve printed out tons and tons of reports for me from Texas to Virginia, the, the Water Board has 29 questions about it, so it's very, very common. But what's really important, and what we need to stress, is in order for nitrification not to get to that unhealthy state, you have to do all the preventive measures, and you have to be able to do constant testing, and people that know how to test that and see where we're going, and then how to rectify it when it gets to a certain level. So, you know, nitrification happens, it's part of having chlorine in your water, but it takes a long time to get there, but once it starts, you need to be able to do that preventive measures, and you need to be able to rectify it before it gets to the point where it's unhealthy.
Just, I'll follow on to that, but I, I do believe, Director, maybe you could just answer the question. Do you test? Do you know how to test for it? Quite honestly, I don't know how to test for anything. Not you. But I have two very qualified people behind me to do. Yes. You have been testing? As I said, since we started taking this water for chlorine residuals and, and so on, so that we could keep ahead of this. Okay, and what have you done recently when you recognized the problem? I know you have taken some action, I just want the public to hear that, because I, I didn't want it to sound like we weren't doing anything. Sure. I would like to call Jose to the, to the microphone, because he's the one that's actually been doing it, and he can tell you exactly what we've done.
Don't think you're getting out of this without having to come up here.
Yeah, you need to stick around.
That's right.
Not getting any mayor and council. So, one of the most important things when we're using chloraminated waters, to get it into our system, out of our system as rapidly as possible, not let it sit in our reservoirs. So, in the cases where we noticed a little bit of nitrification, or going from background to, to showing signs that nitrification was going to start, the action plan calls for lowering the water levels in the, in the, in the reservoirs. Historically, with free chlorine, we kept our reservoirs halfway, we would refill them when they reached a halfway point, keeping them full to halfway. So, the new way we, we handle our reservoirs is, we try to keep them, we, we drain them as low as possible, as low to the point where we feel comfortable. If we had some type of catastrophic emergency, we'd still have enough water to sustain us, to get us through that time period, but not the same amount of water that we stored before.
Can you explain why, why it's important to keep the water level low in the reservoirs?
We cycle the water, get the water in the reservoirs and get it out as, use it as quickly as possible.
But why is that important to the, the process?
The longer the water sits in your reservoir, the warmer the water gets, the easier it becomes the, the nitrification process.
So, one of those things you're doing is then the preventive measures?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And I do have the results from every, weekly results for months of all the testing that's done for, for nitros.
Thank you.
Okay, my other comment was about the cost of this. This is a not-to-exceed contract, and I understand that if we're successful, perhaps, in the initial phase of adding the sodium hydroxide, that the, it, we could, our costs could go down, and we wouldn't spend as much as we would on the corrosion control portion of this, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct. Of course, as we progress, as the study develops, and as we get, you know, results and conclusions and all that, we might be able to eliminate some of the tasks and some of the issues that need to be looked at, if we find a, a suitable solution as we progress through it. So definitely, it's a not-to-exceed amount.
Yes.
And it could potentially be lower if we find, like, if we rapidly find a solution to the problem.
Yes. Okay, my other point was also, one of the deliverables is a corrosion control plan that is going to take into account various scenarios of blended water? Is that, I mean, you know, to Councilmember Delmar's point is that, you know, today, we might propose we take 30% MWD water and 70% groundwater, that could change, we could start getting state water project water with the MWD, we could start importing water via Arcadia that could come out of the main basin, that's got a diff, different chemical composition as well. I mean, I think the question is, are we going to have to keep coming back to you, or do, are we going to have a plan that allows us to take into account these various sources and to adjust accordingly?
For the corrosion control study, yes, we will look at different, at the different water sources that the, the city is using, and look at different corrosion control practices in these different sources.
Uh huh.
And so, yes, we will address the possibility of blending water and the use of the, those different sources.
Yes.
Yeah, and so what's important to, to examine is also, again, going back to the water quality and the different parameters that are characteristic to each water source, but also in light of the specific of the city's distribution system.
Uh huh.
Because the problem that is happening here is, and I apologize, I was not clear during my presentation, is how the water interacts with the existing pipe.
Right.
With, with what has been happening in the city's distribution system for decades, and sometimes close to 100 years in some of, of the pipes, and what has developed along these pipes, and how the water is interacting with that. And that's what's important to look at.
Yeah. Okay, one more comment, I know it's been suggested before as a possible suggestion that we convert to a chloramine system, and then we don't, then we don't have to worry so much about the, you know-
The blending. The blending issue, you're right. It, it is possible, it will depend on the outcome of the third project, looking at the two possibilities. One of them is to see, can we separate service areas-
Yeah.
And keep the disinfectants separated? Or if we start looking at blending under different scenarios, is it possible that there's, we don't have room to operate? And basically, the, all the scenarios are leading us into breakpoint and degradation of water quality.
Yes.
In that case, we may have to go into chlorinate, to, to chlorinate all the water sources.
Okay.
It is, it is a possibility.
One more point, because I thought when we started taking the MWD water, I thought it was the chloramines that was causing the discoloration and reacting with our pipes. That's not the case, is it?
Not necessarily, no, no.
Well-
Not necessarily.
Okay.
It's like, I, I don't want to say- It's like, I don't want to say yes or no because it's such a complex issue. There's so many different parameters that come into play into this. And you see, and so you see, the change in disinfectant is one of those contributing factors, but it's not necessarily just that.
Yeah.
It's like all the matrix of the water that has changed.
Okay, well, that's a discussion for another day if we can't, if we can't solve the blending issue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I've moved that we follow staff's recommendation, award the contract to Dr. B.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you, Doctor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, executive decision here, we have one more item, and we haven't taken a break. I don't think this next item's going to be too long of a discussion, but if you guys want to push?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do a, Madam City Manager, and actually, Director Castro, a brief presentation on this, if you will. I don't think this is going to be very controversial.
Good evening, Mary Harvidian, members of the council. The Southern California Association of Governments, known as SCAG, is updating its growth estimates for 2020, 2035, and 2040, as SCAG is assigned to prepare its regional transportation and sustainable community strategies. The SCAG updates the population, households, and employment forecasts every four years, and the last time Sierra Madre provided input to SCAG was in 2009, in which Sierra Madre was successful in its request to reduce the growth forecasts. SCAG is again requesting all cities to provide input to their growth forecasts, and staff is proposing to reduce these numbers using data recently completed for the general plan build-out numbers. Overall, staff thinks that SCAG overprojected their growth forecast for Sierra Madre. In summary, we've provided a table that shows that the numbers in which staff proposes using data and applying a growth rate, again, using data from the general plan build-out numbers. In summary, for population, the difference between, in SCAG's growth forecast, the difference between 2012 and 2040, they projected 200, I'm sorry, 735 in population. Staff projects 214. That's a difference of 28 years from 2012 to 2040. For households, I do want to make a correction on the households, but SCAG's growth forecast was in 2012, 4,840, and they projected 5,222, which is a difference of 382 new households. Staff's change would be 158 households between 2012 and 2040. In employment, SCAG's growth forecast from 2012 to 2040 was 384 new employees, and staff's change would be 218. We provided a, again, a methodology using simple growth rate calculations. It's, as you all know, it's impossible to predict new development in Sierra Madre, but staff believes that the recent analysis conducted by the General Plan Steering Committee and staff to estimate the build-out represents more realistic potential growth forecasts. If Sierra Madre chooses not to comment or provide revised forecast numbers, SCAG's higher forecast numbers will be used as a basis for their RTP and SES, Regional Transportation Plan. I do just want to make a quick, I mean, a correction to the household growth. Average number of new households per year is at 5.26, not 4.32. This is on page three of your report. It slightly increases that, but it maintains the, the growth rate as projected using the build-out numbers. You can approve these numbers, staff's revised reduced growth forecast numbers. You can, number two, return with further analysis, ask staff to come back, or do not, lastly, do not provide any growth, revised growth forecasts and rely on SCAG's higher growth forecast.
Thank you, Director Castro. Thank you, Director. We'll open this up for public comment. Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion. Any thoughts on this?
I was happy to see the 60 houses taken out. It's my only comment.
A lower number is better than letting SCAG do their thing, so this is good.
This is good. And I'll just employ our SCAG representative to continue, you know, applying heat.
Yeah.
When necessary. So I'll ask for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the revised reduced growth forecast and approve Resolution 1449.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who should I say?
The girls.
And that passes unanimously, and at this point, we are going to recess into closed session, but before we do that, any new items for future agendas? Hearing none, we will take a break and then recess into closed session. Thank you.
And should I stay, or can you just tell me? Okay.